All right, did that go? Okay, awesome. Thank you for the confirmation. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being with us. Aldra and Julie, I did make you co-hosts if you could, if you're able to help admit people as they come in, that would be fantastic. Thank you so much. So, good evening. Welcome to our February Community Town Hall meeting. My name is Sarah Stell and I'm the Director of Communications here at Insight PA. Tonight, we have a packed agenda for you all. So, just to quickly refresh anyone's memory of how the town halls work, we have our presentations that we will go through. We will have Q and A time at the end for any of the topics that we discuss tonight. But if you do have questions during the presentations, at the end of each presentation, we can also check for questions at those points. So, we're going to begin with our CSI Comprehensive Plan Overview and Progress that will be shared by Julie Jaskar, our Chief Academic Officer, and then Audra Mizanti, our Director of Career Education, will share a lot of exciting information about our career and technical education program. We have Ron Shipman here with us tonight, our Director of Education Software and Systems, and he is here for anyone who may still have questions about the Power School data breach. And then it'll come back to me to share upcoming events that we have and bring the meeting to a close. Before I pass it over to Julie Jaskar, if you just joined the meeting, I am putting a link in the chat and I'll be continuing to put that in the chat throughout the meeting. That is the sign-in form for this meeting. We ask that all employees who are here, complete that sign-in form. And then any parents or guardians who are here, please complete that form as well and that will be what we use for our raffle for items from our school store. So again, the link for our sign-in form is in the chat. And now I'm going to stop my share and pass it over to our Chief Academic Officer, Julie Jaskar.
Thanks, everybody. And I'm going to bring the presentation over. And it's giving me a little glitch, so one second, please. I appreciate everybody's patience. Yeah, I'm gonna try to share again. Everybody see that?
That looks good, Julie.
Okay, thanks so much, everybody. I appreciate your patience. This isn't Canva, I'm used to PowerPoint. So, I want to welcome all the parents and guardians that have come. We really enjoy when our parents are here, giving themselves a voice in what's happening at the school. And again, as Sarah said, we welcome any feedback or questions at the end because what you think matters. So, I wanted to talk about CSI. You might have heard those acronyms before. But what it is, is Comprehensive Support and Improvement. So, it's a program under PDE, but actually National through Every Student Succeeds Act, where when we look at across Pennsylvania, some of the lowest performing schools in the areas of academics, graduation rates, attendance, CTE. Whenever there's some low performance, which we have been in years past, they provide some of those high-quality differentiated supports to the districts, and that's what we're doing. So, we reached out to parents, students, our staff, and looked at our own data to create a plan and some of the goals that we were going to work on in conjunction with the state to improve our performance at the school. So, the strategies that we've chosen to look at to help us and part of the state plan is a student-centered coaching model where instructional coaches look at student data of our teachers and look at where they can support with instructional techniques with the teacher to turn those classrooms into higher-performing classrooms. We also have high dosage tutoring that is done in conjunction with one of our partners that looks at students that are still performing fairly well but may have some small learning gaps. And as they relate to the state standards, they receive one-on-one tutoring to fill that gap while they're still receiving the general education curriculum. We also have team-initiated problem solving. That's part of our MTSS system as well. That's when we notice some significant gaps with our students. There'll be a team of teachers that come together, look at the different interventions that we can employ to raise those students' achievement. We also have the Learning Engagement and Attendance Program. That's our LEAP specialists, our social workers, and our attendance specialists, looking at ways that we can keep students engaged in the classrooms as well as address any attendance issues that might be happening. Look at barriers and again, help them overcome those barriers. And last is the competency-based advancement pathway. That's where we look at some independence at the high school level of students independently accruing some credits that maybe they were credit deficient before they got here, had failed some classes. This is an independent study, however, we offer a lot of support so that they could catch up on some of those credits and do some of that work asynchronously. So, we're going to look at, now that you know the strategies, we're going to look at the goals that we had designed and how we're doing progressing on those. So, our first CSI goal is 60% of our students in all of our groups will demonstrate academic growth in reading as measured by our local assessment data from the fall, and then we're comparing that to the winter. So, again, thank you for everybody that participated in those assessments. And as we could see, we reached over 60% of student growth. So, 70% of our students that took that assessment in the fall have made growth in the winter. So, we're really excited about that. And we thank our learning coaches, parents, and our teachers for all of these gains. The second target is similar, but we're looking at math. So, how did our students do in that initial math diagnostic compared to the second diagnostic in the winter? And we could see that 65% of our students made growth, and again, we met our target goal there. Our third area, and this would actually be a reflection of students passing courses. Can we predict that our 12th graders are going to graduate? So, we were looking for 69% of our students that started here in ninth grade four years ago, how are they doing passing all of their courses? Right now, we're below by 9% on those. It's 60% all courses passed. What we know historically is that that goes up towards the, as June becomes closer, students become a little more motivated, take advantage of some of those wonderful supports that we have, whether that be the tips or whether that be after-school tutoring or meeting with their teachers to really start to pass those courses and make sure that they're getting to graduation. So, to continue that, but this is pretty historical, that we will see an increase towards the end of the year. And then in regards to our accelerated pathways, so students enrolled in those makeup credits. And again, this will affect graduation as well. We could see that there are 525 courses that are being taken advantage right now. And that actually shows 304 students that may be taking one or more of those credits. And you can see by the grade level of the students that are taking those makeup credits. So, the next is 75% of our students participating in student-centered coaching model. That's where those instructional coaches are coming into the classrooms and assisting our teachers. We're hoping that the kids in those classrooms meet or exceed established standard-based goals as measured by unit post-test throughout the cycle. So, we do pre-test with our students before starting a unit, and then we'll do post-tests. So, here we can see where the target is met. In our second quarter, 75% of our students were meeting those standard goals. So, our kids are, you know, being instructed by the teachers and it's making a difference. They're retaining the information and they're excelling in those standards. So, we're really excited about all of these met targets. The second is the MTSS rate of improvement. So, if their students have a goal area that they're, that needs remediation, whether that be in reading, math, an attendance goal, or a functional behavioral goal such as maintaining themselves being organized or lessening their anxiety. If they have goals in those areas, we look to see if they're progressing as a result of that intervention. And again, we can see where the target is met. That 62% of our students that have those goals are progressing. And we're going to continue to look at the different data methods that we're taking to ensure that the data is current and that we continue to have those students meet their goals and become on track in their standards. And then our attendance goals. So, our attendance goal is 80% of our students will have fewer than 10 or more unexcused absences by January 17, 2025. We are slightly below target here. We were really hoping that 80% of our students would meet it. We are at 79. So, we are knocking on the door. So, again, we want to thank our parents and guardians for letting us know why the students are missing courses. What we're finding is that does seem to be related to illness. So, we'll continue to monitor those reasons. And again, we'd like to partner with our parents and guardians to, you know, look at barriers that might be impeding them coming to class and coming to school each day and see how we can support. We still do have 60% of our students that have 10 or plus excused or unexcused absences. So, we know that the more that we attend school, the more achievement we're going to have and the better the students are going to progress. So, again, we want to partner with parents and guardians to look at those barriers, overcome them, and make sure that our kids are accessible in their further learning. And does anybody have any questions? Or otherwise, we can move on to our career and technical education presented by Audra. And I could also take questions at the end. Okay, again, thank you for being here and your attention. And I'm always available through email or call if you have any questions at a later time as well. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Julie. I'm going to start by just making sure everyone can see my screen. Are you seeing the same slide? All right, I see Sarah shaking her head. All right, welcome, everyone. I'm really excited to be here tonight. My name's Audra Mizanti. I'm the Director of Career Education. So, not only is it my first time doing Town Hall with you, it's also CTE Month, which is a great time to really highlight what's going on and what we have to offer here at Insight. Let me get to my next one. So, the agenda for mine is going to be, I'm going to give you a brief overview of what career education looks like here at Insight and why it's important, how that leads into our high school program of CTE, and then of course, what our work-based learning program has to offer for your students. So, what is career education? So, thinking about everything that Julie just highlighted and that CSI and all those targets, career education is really an overarching goal for all of that. It's very important for students to have. It releases stress, helps them understand what their future can hold. It helps them understand what lifestyle they want to have, what their strengths are, their skills, their abilities, even what they don't like. So, here at Insight, what we do is we take them through a collection of activities that start in kindergarten and they go all the way to their senior year. We do that through a curriculum called Smart Futures, which I'm going to share the link with you later on too, just so you can get an idea what that curriculum looks like. In addition to that, I have a career education model that will kind of lay out for you what students learn in more of I-statements from kindergarten all the way to their senior year. But what's important about it is it really helps provide guidance for them to set goals, builds their motivation, and helps them understand what that school-to-work transition can look like. It reduces their anxiety about their future. It really increases their self-efficacy, as well as broadens what options are out there for them to explore. And lastly, it really helps motivate their engagement to be here and understand what they're learning and why they're learning it. So, as students progress through the career education program and those activities all the way up to their eighth-grade year of middle school, it really starts to set them to how they can design their graduation plan and what courses they can take in high school that we offer through the CT program. So, when you hear about CT pathways, I really like this definition because it kind of helps you understand and really think of those pathways of different roads that students can take, kind of explore the career possibilities, occupations that could be designed in those career forces, and really helps indicate their interest in pursuing those. Students are never locked in either. They can start out and take in a course in one pathway and decide it's not for them, which is what we actually want. We want them to understand what they like and don't like, and then move into a different program should they choose. All of that is posted on our website, and again, I can share that link with you as well. It gives you more information of what those courses look like. So, I'm going to take you through each pathway as broad as I can make it for you to understand what the options are. So, our first one we have is our business pathway. As you can see on the left side there, we have a whole bunch of different opportunities and different courses that span from understanding what business is, the communication parts of it, entrepreneurship, students can take Microsoft and earn certifications in there, marketing, accounting, personal finance, post-secondary preparation as well. Important thing to highlight is you can see on there, our marketing and accounting course, we both, both of those are offered in college credit. So, we partner with Robert Morris University. So, students that enroll in either one of those classes or in the high school credit they need towards graduation in addition to college credit. On the right-hand side, you can see a list of industry certifications. To give you an idea about what they are, they are certifications that come directly from industry. So, like I mentioned, Microsoft, you can see marketing, ethics, entrepreneurship, and professional skills in business. Those are resume builders for students. And we have teachers that actually align their courses and their curriculum so students can take those exams and those assessments at the end as part of their grade, but they also earn that certification that they take with them on job interviews or anytime throughout their career. Another important part is we try to encourage any kind of work-based learning. So, our students are all over the state, so we encourage them different internship opportunities that could be available maybe regionally for them. And we do have a work-based learning coordinator in place that can help support that. As you see these slides, I do want to highlight, like, these are all real photos of students that we have that have been out in the workforce and doing different obligations. So, this is, students actually this year that were at Calhari and they competed in FBLA, which is a business competition. And they actually, we have 15 students right now that are moving on to states in April in Hershey, which is very exciting. And all of these opportunities are available for students. Even if they're not in the actual business pathway, they're welcome to join. The next one is our digital technology pathway. This one is really all around computer databases, webpage design, programming, and we just launched cybersecurity because that is very important as well in our workforce. So, you can see as well, we have a whole list of different courses that can be included for students to take. They can move around in those as well. Maybe they want to adventure in artificial intelligence, digital discovery around IT fundamentals, robotics, engineering design. Different certifications align with those as well, and they are dependent on the course. So, maybe they want to take something in regards to HTML, which is a programming language or Python. We just started offering computational thinking, which kind of sounds big and scary for students, but super important in the workforce and very marketable. In those as well, we are actually just launching some work-based learning opportunities as well for our students. So, we partner with GDC. They work very closely with our IT department, and we have students that are getting involved in internships there as well as in-house with our IT department. And we also have the robotics pre-apprenticeship, and we partner with Pennsylvania College of Technology, and we offer a advanced manufacturing pre-apprenticeship as well that students can enroll in. Our healthcare pathway, this is another exciting one. So, this one, we actually have pre-registered nurses that teach this pathway. So, they come with a whole lot of industry experience, which is wonderful. So, students that get in this, these courses or learn everything from human growth and development, we have medical terminology, and probably our more popular one is students when they get into our nursing assistant program. So, what that means is we have students, by their junior year, they're taking nursing assistant. It's a year-long course. And once they get through into semester two, dependent on like certain requirements that are accomplished in that course, we will actually come up, work with our work-based learning quarter coordinator. His name's Scott. He will find a training center where your student is located in the state, and we will place them there for CNA training. So, they'll actually earn their training there, and then we will also help them get their state license. So, when they leave us, they have that job-ready license in their hand for them. And I'm going to highlight this again in the end, but all of this you're hearing, industry certifications, nursing training, college credit is all paid for by Insight. There's no cost to family for any of these programs. As you can see, industry certifications that are offered, in addition to being in the CNA, they can earn their first aid. We have HIPAA. We have Stop the Bleed, and we've also launched a OSHA healthcare. Education pathway. So, this one is our newest. This is one that's offered, we just piloted this year. And we have three courses right now, Introduction to Lesson Planning, Fundamentals of Teaching, Understanding Child Development. Next year, we will be launching our Introduction to Special Education. That one as well will be a college credit course that we use through Robert Morris University. This pathway is important for any student that's interested in what the teaching profession looks like. And not even just being a teacher, maybe they want to see what it's like to be a counselor or a librarian, anything that's in that industry, this is great exposure for them. It's important them to have first aid, so we also train in that, and we also get them trained in the EpiPen as well. All right, so I mentioned work-based learning program a couple of times. So, this is a separate program that really gets involved in every one of our pathways as well as other areas where students may not be directly in a pathway, but we want to get them exposed to the workforce. We have a Diversified Occupation Course, which is a great course for any student can take at their junior or senior year. They actually can earn four credits while taking the course. And then in their spring semester, we will place them in a working position. The goal is that they're getting a paid working position while they're earning that credit. But we've had students even go in as being like, you know, volunteer firefighters along the way, which is totally fine. We're really here to support them in what that career journey can look like. At that course, it's a very rigorous course. So, sometimes students want to get in something a little more, a little easier for their schedule. So, we actually offer a continuous work experience course that's all asynchronous. So, it doesn't matter really what their career objective is. They can take that course asynchronously and earn a half-credit as needed. I mentioned, we've had internship opportunities all across all of our pathways. And in addition to that, we have those two different pre-apprenticeship pathways. So, we have a partnership with ABC Construction. So, we have students that actually go into that construction pre-apprenticeship, and they're there in person one day a week, as well as working through modules to earn that certification as well. And mentioned the advanced manufacturing. That's actually a really important one I do want to highlight again. That one is something that we have up like 15 students, I think, enrolled right now. That one is also one to get students' job ready when they leave us. So, our coordinator works with the college as well as students to get them placed in there and help them around the state for their in-person part of it. These are all pictures of students that you can see on there as well that have all been through one of these programs. So, we're excited to see what else we have to share with them. And I'm just trying to find my cursor. There it is. Okay, lastly, what I want to highlight is some upcoming courses and pathway for Insight. So, we will be posting a arts, entertainment, and design pathway that will start next year. So, any student that's interested music-wise, I said arts, we have digital studios course, we have journalism, all this falls under this career cluster. So, we're excited to really highlight it. These are all courses we actually offer here, but we're really putting it all together now to make it a pathway for students to really flow through and understand what those careers look like too. Career courses, keep an eye out for a cosmetology course as well as a veterinary science course. We're going to start with just the courses, but we're hoping to see some student interest in there. I think a lot of students are interested in, you know, that industry as well as anything to care for animals. All right, well, that ends my slides. As you can see, my name's on there, my email as well. I'd be happy to ever answer any questions you may have if you want to learn more about this. Scott Accree is the Work-Based Learning Quarter as well. He's wonderful and can help with any questions you have. And being CT Month, every student is getting exposure to all of these again. So, if your students are in high school, there's going to be some presentations and their counselor seminars in the upcoming weeks so they can hear all about the opportunities before scheduling. We have some plans for our eighth graders as well that are preparing for high school so they can hear everything as well. And as mentioned, everything is at no cost to our families. So, we always encourage students to take advantage of these opportunities while you're here. And I have not seen the chat, so I apologize if there's any questions coming in, but let me check. And if not, I'm happy to have anybody come off mic and ask any questions too.
Thank you, Audra.
Thank you.
All right. So, again, we will have time. If you maybe didn't have a question then, but you think of one at the end of the meeting, we will have time again for questions. So, we are now going to introduce Ron Shipman, who is our Director of Educational Software and Systems. And he is here to answer any questions you may have regarding the recent Power School data breach. So, I am going to hand it over to Ron.
I'll take it from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And what I'll do is I will share my screen just to kind of reference back to what Sarah shared in Parent Square related to the Power School data breach, just so you can see, just, oh, I can't share.
Oh, let me get you. I got you.
Thank you.
All right, you should be good now.
All right. There we go. Got it. So, I just wanted to kind of show you guys. This was the message that was sent out, that was sent to parents, and just wanted to remind everyone that there was a Power School data breach that happened and that leads you to this site right here, which is the Power School National Data Breach Site for basically for everyone. And what happened was on December 28, there was a data breach on the Power School side. It was not on the Insight side at all. And the information that was accessed was a student table, which is student information as well as staff information. It was destroyed by power, destroyed by the hackers during that time. So, it has not been released or any information out. But Power School is paying for everyone, all students and all staff, to get a credit monitoring free for two years to see if anything pops up. You have the support from Power School. You have the support from us as well. And to sign up for it, and I will make sure I drop this in the chat once I'm done talking. It gives direct instructions on how to enroll for you if you want to enroll, as well as if you want to enroll any of the students under the age of 18. Again, this was not on Insight. This was a data breach that happened with Power School. Over 1,000 schools were affected. So, it wasn't just an Insight situation. This was just really everyone related to Power School for at least 1,000 schools. So, there's not much more to do at this time. We have worked with Power School to get as much information and make sure that everyone is covered with this plan for the credit monitoring as well, and want to make sure that everyone enrolls by May 30, 2025. So, that was the general breakdown of what happened with the Power School data breach, and I'll stop sharing from there. If, are there any questions, feel free to ask. If not, Sarah, you can definitely, we can drop my email in the chat if they want to shoot an email and have a conversation. We definitely can as well. Any questions? All right, well, it looks like I'm going to pass it back to you, Sarah, and we can continue going. All right. Well, it looks like I'm going to pass it back to you, Sarah, and we can continue going.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Okay. One of my favorite parts of the town halls, when I get to highlight some of the fun things we have coming up. So on our communications team, we have our three community engagement coordinators, Chelsea Burke, who is out here in the western, we're going to say half of the state. And then we've got Kristen Seidel, mostly up in the northeast and Cortland Handy, who I actually believe is here with us tonight in Philadelphia, the surrounding counties and a little bit into southern, central Pennsylvania as well. So the events here are all on our website. If you go to our school website and go to the calendar, you will be able to find all of these events and click on signup forms or get information and learn when signups will open for some of the later events. There are, I just included March here, but we have events already on the calendar for April and May. So you can take a look at what's coming up in your area. And you can also find those, they are always listed in every newsletter that we send out. So it's listed in the Grayban newsletters as well as the school-wide newsletters. So at this point, we have time. If anyone has any questions about anything we discussed this evening, while we have the folks here with us who are the experts on these topics. And if there are no questions, I am going to drop the sign-in form link into the chat again. And just a reminder, we do ask that all staff members and all parent and guardian guests complete that form. And for our parents and guardians who are here, we are going to use that form to do our raffle for items from our school store. So please make sure you fill that out. If you have any trouble with that form after this meeting ends, you can email me. I'll put my email address in the chat. You can also message me through Parent Square. I'm Sarah Stell. And you can find me by searching for my name there and I'll, I'll help you out and make sure we get you on the list for tonight. Next month in March, we have not set the date yet, but we will share it as soon as we have it. And we will be talking state testing and talking about the accommodations that we offer during in-person state testing, the different things we have going on at the in-person testing sites to make it as enjoyable an experience for our students as it can be. And it's really a great opportunity, not just for us to see how they're doing and, and help inform our instructional decisions, but also for the students to see each other and see our staff members. So I'm going to stop sharing. I'm going to put my email address in the chat in case anyone needs it. Thank you all again for being here. Thank you to our presenters. We really appreciate you being a part of this and being an active member of our school community. Hope that you all have a wonderful evening. The recording will go up on both YouTube and our school website.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.